Welcome to Benita Springs Council Meeting. We call this meeting to order. Can I have your location, please, Pastor? Introduce yourself and everybody rise, please.
I am Father Bill Poppal. I'm the Associate Pastor at St. Mary's Episcopal Church down the road. Let us pray. Gracious God, our heavenly Father, we pause to acknowledge your presence here with us this day. We come to you asking for your guidance as we begin this meeting. Give us wisdom as we discuss the issues that are before us. Allow us to grow closer as a group. May we come to trust that the decisions we make here today will be in the best interest of the community that we are pledged to serve. This we ask in your wonderful name. Amen.
Amen. We pledge allegiance on the street. One, two. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the Constitution, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Sheffield, we have the roll callers.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Here.
Councilmember Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Fullick.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Here.
Okay, now we have a public comment. Come to the microphone up here and tell us what you think. This is your chance to lead your government. You are the government. In this country, we are the people. We are the government.
Okay, this is, this is public comment on agenda items. If you are here for the zoning item, that will be coming up right next and you can speak on that item as well.
Okay, Jim.
Good evening, for the record. I'm Jim Magnus. I'm here to talk about item number nine, the appeal for dormitories in Benita Bay. I live about six to seven blocks from the proposed dormitories. Benita Springs has a very capable, responsible, and thoughtful zoning interpretation that is a very strict, in a very strict sense, supports their conclusion. However, what I'm asking the mayor and the council to consider, a more broad interpretation presented by Grady Minor to allow the dormitory use for workforce housing in Benita Bay with the stipulations offered in their appeal. Please take into consideration the following when you make your decision. Benita Bay Club is a good, responsible, forward-thinking corporate citizen willing to take on the liability, the investment, and the management of housing for some of its employees. The appeal request includes commitments to the following. An onsite manager. Employees must work for Benita Bay, the marina, or community association. Occupancy is going to be fixed at 22 units, which will allow up to 44 employees to be housed. The design is in the package and you all see it. It's utilizing an existing building. It's a nice-looking structure. And they're only requesting to do it for just this one piece of property. A short story, I took a year off of college when I was a sophomore and junior to work in Colorado.
Jim, if you take the paper off the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There you go. Thanks.
Short story, I took a year off of college between my sophomore and junior year to work in Colorado resort town. I was able to find a local affordable housing option where I didn't need a car. Grocery, medical, personal services, and shopping were all local for me. This gave me a leg up and it afforded for me the ability to save a reasonable amount of money in my pocket when I returned to college. I look at this Benita Bay project in the same way. It will take cars off the road. Personal services, post office, medical, grocery, dining, shopping is all within easy walking or biking distance. This housing option will provide people with a leg up to save for the future. Please approve the appeal as written by Grady Minor with the stipulations in the request and provide a workforce housing option for people to learn, be exposed to different jobs, and provide enough support that moving on with some savings, enthusiasm for the future is a real possibility. Thanks for listening.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, how about Eagles Club? Are you gonna say anything?
I'm Joe Murphy, a city resident for 23 years. I'm representing the Eagles Club here in Benita Springs. We consider ourselves good citizens and appeal to the city in any way we can to help. We're a very good financial donator to charities in this community. In the past, we have given the city five-plus acres, which is now your soccer field, and we held on to one-third of an acre in the past because it was where our septic system was located before we went on city sewer and water.
Okay.
And we went on city sewer and water a few years ago to the tune of 18,000 bucks to do it. But we had a licensed plumbing contractor that actually initially put the thing in to remove it from service in the proper manner, blocking off and taking out the pumps and so on and so forth, and rebaffling our grease trap for the city water and sewage. That being said, that piece of land is of no use to us anymore, and it's adjacent to your soccer field. And I understand that there are plans, if you grant permission to have it deeded, to look into or consider building restrooms there for the soccer players, which is well-needed. But we are here to offer that one-third of acre approximately, and we'd like for you to proceed with the deeding and the legal transactions to get that done.
Yes, thank you. I'm glad you made your comments because you're late. You're a lot further down the road on your, on the agenda, and you don't need to stay here all night, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Is there any questions?
We're not allowed to do that.
Oh, okay.
Any other, any other public comment? Okay, I guess we'll move on to, well, I skipped the approval of the agenda. I think we, we don't need that. And Mayor's welcome, we skipped that, too. We're a land of laws, and we have an example of rules and ordinances and standards that affect our next item. And.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. That was rude.
Just moving on.
Okay, well, all right, well, your comments on the agenda item.
We just had that.
I have some comments.
Mr. Mayor, I think there's a confusion. Councilman Carr was just approving the approval of the agenda that you mentioned going back to. I don't think, and I believe you were intending to move past that item since there were no questions. If your questions are related to the zoning ordinance, I'd like to have the clerk go ahead and read the title and then have the applicant make their presentation.
Is that what you were intending?
I was just supporting you saying approve the agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We have a motion and a second.
Let's do a roll call.
Approve the agenda. Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Do we usually vote on that?
Generally not.
Okay, all right, very good.
I'll admonish Councilman Carr later on, don't worry.
Okay.
Okay, sorry for the confusion.
At this time, I'd ask the clerk to go ahead and read the title, the second reading for the public hearing, and then I'll swear in all the witnesses.
This, this is the second reading of a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs to amend the Astero Bay Commercial Plan Development/Residential Plan Development, Nishalum CPD/RPD, to increase the RPD boundary by 5.3 plus or minus acres, remove the northeastern preserve consisting of 0.62 plus or minus acres, and increase the mangrove preserve area from 3.51 acres to 3.64 acres. Remove the ALF/ILF/CCRC Development Option, Option 1. Add townhomes and two-family attached homes to the schedule of uses within the RPD. Add RPD Development Regulations for Townhomes and Two-Family Attached Homes. Add a trip conversion matrix to allow the multifamily units to be converted to other residential types with no increase to PM, peak hour trip generation. Modify Deviation 8 and Deviation 13 to address changes in building layout and removal of preserve acreage. Add six new deviations and modify the master concept plan to provide for these changes and provide for an effective date.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, at this time, since this is a quadgi judicial hearing, anyone who, both the applicant staff and any members of the public who wish to speak on this item, I'd ask that you please stand, raise your right hand, and do you swear to, swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you very much. Now we can all trust each other.
Okay. Good evening, for the record. Jacqueline Gensen with Community Development. I'm just going to do a brief introduction of the case. Procedurally, we always let the applicant proceed first with their presentation, should you choose to go ahead and do that. This is an existing plan development that was originally approved in 2020 and then amended in 2021 by public hearing by the city council. Subsequent to that 2021 amendment, based on drawings that were presented at that adoption hearing, there were changes that were then processed by staff as an administrative amendment. So, and now we're here again with another public hearing amendment just based on the scope of the request before us. This was heard by the zoning board in August with a 4-2 approval. Changes that have been done since the first reading that I did go ahead and encapsulate in the green sheet is that there was a change to the master concept plan based on negotiations with staff and the applicant on the indigenous preserve acreage calculations. So that impacted the master concept plan and also the condition language. And then also, the applicant has asked if we could remove a condition in the original 2020 ordinance for a tall tower permit application request. That, at the time, we thought would be required as part of the Lee County Port Authority. It turns out it is not after discussions with them, and it's a hindrance for the applicant for finance purposes, so staff went ahead and had no problem removing that. Also with this request, there's a companion DRI amendment request that's later in the agenda packet for the city attorney's items. We'll present on that. And then there's also a companion administrative amendment should you choose to approve this request for the zoning project next door. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the applicant.
You go over the tower again?
So, certain towers of a height might require a tall tower permit from the Lee County Port Authority, and that's for incoming air traffic that comes over the area. And there's no air traffic patterns that come over in this area, so the port authority did not find it necessary.
Don't we have an ordinance on that?
We do not, sir, not for that reason. Otherwise, it's FAA regulations that take place.
What's the height of this? It doesn't matter?
For the purposes of a tall tower permit by the Lee County Port Authority, it is not applicable.
There was, there was just, Mr. Mayor, there was a condition that was previously on the plan development that, to make sure that there was not going to be any air traffic conflicts with the building, they've determined that that is not required, so they've just removed that condition.
Okay, all right, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Good evening, for the record. Rick Shavonovich, on behalf of the applicant. I'm going to do just a brief overview of the project and then open it up to any questions you may have. With me tonight are Mark Wilson, Steve Wilson, Lisa Van Dean, Craig Kleen Smith, and Ray Piasente, all with the applicant. Alexis Crespo and Josephine Medina are planners. Cesario Leos and Jackie LaRocque are professional engineers. Ted Trish is our transportation consultant, and Shane Johnson is our environmental consultant. Hopefully, they will, they're not going to make a presentation, but if you have questions regarding those topics, they are available. How do I advance this?
I'll do it for you.
Thank you. Good things. You ready?
The circus of acrobats.
No worries. Thank you. Next one, please. Thanks. Next one, please. There we go. I'm sure you're all aware that this property is the old Weeks Fish Campsite. As Ms. Gensen has advised you, we got that rezoned in 2020 and are here to make further revisions to the PD. The project is both a commercial PD and a residential PD. It's 30.51 acres. If you recall, we agreed to provide 72 wet slips, 25 dry slips, a boat ramp for public use, and a myriad of other public improvements for the project. None of those are being changed by what we're proposing today. It was also approved for 300 dwelling units. That also is not being changed. Next slide, please. What we are doing is essentially, we're adding five acres to the project. We are eliminating what was the independent assisted living use and replacing it with the ability to do two-family dwelling units or townhomes as permitted uses. Currently, we're only allowed multifamily, and that can be up to 75 feet in height. So with this other product type in here, we have the ability to do lower, lower, lower skill uses. We're modifying the development regulations in the PD to accommodate the changes that we're making for two-family and townhome projects. And as I said, we're not changing anything with regard to density. Now, with regard to the master plan, there are, I've got them side by side. The left-hand side is the current PD master plan with the, the two residential towers and three taller 75-foot buildings. If you look over to the right, we still have the two residential towers, but we have residential pods for development to allow for the single, for the two-family and townhome product types. Other than that, those are really the minor changes we're making to the, to the project. None of the major commitments that were previously made are being changed. The density is not being increased. And with that, unless you have questions for me, the team is here to answer any specific questions you may have.
How many acres was this?
30.51.
That's the whole project?
That's the whole project.
30.5?
One.
Now, how many units are in the towers?
The two, 224, right? There's 224 in the towers, and then the remainder would be.
And you're going to put 300 more, so you're going to buy.
No, 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 a total, a total of 300. So there would be 76 more.
Okay, that's a little confusing. You thought you were going to build 300 more.
No, sir.
Okay, very good. So it'd be a total of 300 with the towers and the multifamily.
Right, which is the current number that's in the PD.
Very good. That's much better. I have misunderstanding there with the assisted living and all that. I thought you were going to have 300 assisted living units.
We've eliminated, if you recall, we had two options. We can either go a senior living concept or we can go customary multifamily. And now we're just going customary multifamily.
Okay, it's all right. I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Let's check real quick. Is there any, any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Seeing no members.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Motion, Corey. Thanks, folks. Have a good evening. It's a nice project.
Coming to the stage is Mike Figon.
Okay, Mike, you're under a gun tonight.
Good evening, council. Mike Figon with Community Development, for the record. The applicant has a presentation for you, so I'm just going to give a brief synopsis and then turn it over to the applicant as this is their request. There was an interpretation request that came in earlier this year back in March. They really sent it around, some allowable uses within the Benita Bay PUD. And it was sent in around a request to convert an existing building into employee housing for employees of Benita Bay specifically, so it's not an outside impact in terms of other employees elsewhere in the city. This was just meant for Benita Bay. Staff issued the interpretation based on a review of the applicable Benita Bay ordinances. We stand by our interpretation. An appeal was filed in May that sort of asked for a second opinion, if you will, to come to city council to see whether or not there was additional agreement with the interpretation or perhaps something could be done to allow this particular use. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Wayne Arnold with the applicant.
Do you know where they put my presentation? Is it in the clerk's folder, perhaps?
Hey, Mike, are you allowed to answer questions at this time?
Sure, I can.
Is anybody with a short-term rental in Lee County not paying tourist development tax? Under condition, any condition?
Oh, that's not a zoning. I'm not sure of that one, sir. I'm sorry. I know that.
I'll leave, Mr. Mayor, I'd leave that to see if the, if the applicant has considered that and what their response is, but any lease term that's under six months, or under a year, I'm sorry, is subject to tourist development tax, the bed tax.
Six months. I think it's six.
I think it, maybe it is six months, yeah.
It's a 5% plus you got a 6.5% sales tax. You got 11.5% on a short-term rental. Okay, here you go.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Wayne Arnold, here representing the Benita Bay Club. With me tonight is Fred Fung, the general manager of the club, Neil Montgomery, our land use attorney, and Michael Herrera, the engineer who's been working on the project from our firm, is also here to answer any questions you may have. Thought what I would do is give a short overview of why we're here and then turn it over to Mr. Fung to tell you about why the seasonal housing is so important for the Benita Bay Club, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. So, we're here, as Mike said, because we filed for an interpretation because the seasonal employee housing that Benita Bay wants to repurpose their sales facility to utilize is an undefined term in your code. There's nothing in your land development code that talks about this particular type of use, and the Benita Bay PUD has language in it that says other comparable uses can be determined by the director. And so, we thought we were comparable, and we tried to make that case. And because this tract is designated regional commercial under the Benita Bay PUD, it allows today multifamily dwellings, it allows transient lodging, it allows hotels, allows fire station where our firefighters could live if they were to decide to locate on this tract or others near here. So in our position, we understand we don't meet the definition of a dormitory or the transient lodging under your code, but we think we are comparable and believe that, that council has the authority to tell us that this is an okay use.
Does Benita Bay own all Promenade?
No, sir. They do not.
You just own this one building?
The Benita Bay Club owns this building, and.
It's separate from, from what?
The club is a separate entity that you can join if you're a Benita Bay resident, and so the club and some of the marina folks and potentially some of the golf course staff could be housed in this location. So they would have to be entities of Benita Bay to live here. So, one of the things that we try to do is try to lay that case out, your staff and outside council opine that we don't meet any of the definitions, therefore, we can't be there. So we've appealed that decision, and we're appealing to you to determine that we are comparable to a transient lodging facility or one of the other uses that's permitted because what I have on, I'm not sure how to go back with this, but at the bottom of the screen there, you've got 107 permitted uses in this part of the Benita Bay PUD, and the 108th one says any other commercial or professional service which is comparable in nature to the foregoing uses, which the director determines to be compatible. And we believe that we're.
Who's the director?
Mr. Dolmer.
Mr. Dolmer?
Yes.
Okay.
So, in this particular case, we believe that the uses that we want to put here, while they're not one of your defined terms, but to put essentially 22 rooms, of which two people could reside per room, and I've got some floor plans here if we want to go through them. I'm not sure how much detail you want, but I think some of the important things that, as, as we were trying to go through the process, is this is really needed employee housing. We're working with other employers in the area to try to find ways for them to not only attract but retain their employees because the cost of living in southwest Florida has become such a critical issue. As a person who owns my own company, it's really hard to attract people here and pay them a competitive wage when the rent structure is what it is. And this might be a good opportunity to turn it over to Mr. Fung to tell you a little bit about why it's so important to Benita Bay. And if you need to see other information, I've got information. This highlights the site location. This shows you, I think there was some question whether or not we were breaching the gated part of this community. The sales center is accessed before you get to the gate, and that, so we don't have an issue with interrupting the privacy of the residents that are there. And keep in mind, most of these employees are less than a quarter mile away from where they'll be working. We think from that standpoint alone, it makes perfect sense to put your, your folks here that can work and walk or ride their bike.
There was a question about the parking, but I went out and looked at this again.
Yeah.
They have sufficient parking.
Yeah, there are 28 parking spaces onsite, including handicap parking, and most of these people will not have cars. They'll probably have an electric bike like you see zipping around town, and they can get across the street to Publix or to a restaurant or to the gas station convenience.
They mentioned in this letter I've been getting, dozens of, 600 employees. 600 employees don't work for the club.
I'll let Mr. Fung answer that. They do employ hundreds of people in different capacities with the Benita Bay Club facilities because they have health club facility, tennis facility, golf, dining. They have several elements of that, marina, so I think all of those are folded under the club atmosphere.
Okay, well, thank you.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, before we, before we vote on something, I want to make sure my understanding is correct. I'm going to rely on Derek on this. If we pass this as proposed and someone challenges the decision, which any member of the public has a right to do, who pays for the defense?
Well, the city would obviously bear some level of defense, but typically, if an action where the rights that are requested to be secured are by another property owner, they will be a co-defendant, and they will carry the bulk of that defense.
Okay. I just want to make sure you know that. It doesn't affect my vote. I just want to make sure it's on the record.
Wayne, is this man and female housing?
Yes.
You're going to have all, four people using one toilet?
It will be a coed facility, and I think.
Who's going to clean it? Who's going to regulate it?
Well, we have onsite management. They'll employ people to clean the facilities, and then the onsite management can manage the coed nature of the facility. It's not atypical for, in college dormitories these days, they also have coed dorms, so it's not uncommon.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, you know, just for the record, from a staff standpoint, staff, I don't believe staff was wrong on their interpretation. So I don't think staff was wrong. However, I think it is the right move to do it, so I am supportive. But as far as the interpretation goes, if you look at exactly what's written, I, I don't think staff was wrong. But I do feel that, you know, there's only a couple places there that a city can make a, make an impact on affordable housing, and when you have Benita Bay in a situation where generally, you know, there's, if there's an issue in Benita Bay, a lot of times, there's 50/50. That's not the case here. I heard from probably 1,000 people, they're all in favor of it. So for that to happen in Benita Bay and simultaneously address affordable housing, you know, I'm in favor. But I just did want to, you know, so it didn't seem as if the city was saying staff was completely wrong when we passed the 7-0. I wanted to say that.
I wanted to say that as far as the interpretation side of this goes, for other developers or PUDs watching, you know, everything will be examined individually. But I think this is the right move. So, thanks.
Well, my comment is, this is a land of law and ordinances. And I believe that we can change the law. We can change the rules. That's what's nice about America. We can change the rules if we see fit. And that's what, you came to us to change the rules, change what is on paper. So we have a motion and a second. Any more comments?
Mr. Mayor, one last request. After we vote, I need to put something on the record that requires a motion. It has nothing to do precisely with this, but it does. So, all I'm saying, once we vote, we're going to keep the hearing open long enough to get this on the record.
So, roll call vote?
Okay, I guess. I don't understand.
That's not anything that's going to change our vote?
It'll be clear to you when I do it.
You know.
He just wants a chance to talk.
Okay.
Could you clarify the substance of what you're approving?
They're approving the request of the administrative interpretation based on the applicant.
That they can build the dorm.
That the use, which is not essentially listed, is similar or accessory to the other uses in the district is allowed.
Back to Fred.
No.
We'll deal with that later.
Could we just do a vote?
If we do the vote, then we'll deal with the other thing.
Councilmember Carr.
Yes.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Mayor. I think Chris Corey directed staff some time ago to study this and come up with revisions to the various codes that we have to make sure that if this interpretation is continued on, that we get buildings that'll be as nice as this or quality. So, it's called zoning in progress.
Well, I would point out that Benita Bay is unique in that the PUD not only covers residential, it also covers the promenade, which is commercial. Okay? And I know that there's some concern on the part of community development that we take action with respect to the land development code so that we don't create employee housing slums. Okay? So, we have approved the plan for Benita Bay and I would ask that staff work with community development and with the zoning board to make whatever changes are needed so that we, as a city, can deal with future employee housing requests on the part of developers going forward. Because under Senate Bill 250 by Kathleen Pasodomo, we're going to have to address employee housing within the city of Benita Bay. So, I think this is what Fred's asking, that staff is directed to come up with whatever we need to do with the land development code to protect the interests of the city and its citizens with respect to the future development of employee housing. But that's separate and apart from the approval for Benita Bay, which is really a unique kind of situation.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a follow-up question to that? Okay, so...
I think it's out of order, all this conversation.
No.
This is not on the agenda.
No, it's not.
So it's squelching. No.
Talk about whatever we want to talk about.
I feel like this is, you know...
This is not the time. We have a whole bunch of...
All right, we'll just, I think we have, we know where the votes are going.
Bring back...
Let's do...
No, no, we have to pass this because if we don't...
Here's the question that I had. Okay, so my issue is this. Are we, and conceptually, I love what you're saying, Chris. My question is this. Are we putting ourselves in a position where now we're going to open it up to other PUDs and I'll be like, "Okay, this is in here, let's try to do it", which I'm not saying is necessarily bad or not, or is it better to have it so that they're going to come to us individually each time and each time we consider it?
Well, Jesse, I think that that's a question we need to consider, but we don't need to decide that tonight.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. I'm just asking that we allow staff to advise us as to what they think is needed.
I'm in agreeance.
And because they are, we have what's called zoning in progress, which means nobody can apply until that study's done and we do something with it. And that's important because it could happen.
It protects the city.
Yeah, we don't know that the next applicant would have as nice a design and all that as Benita Bay.
All right, the motion's...
I'll just point and little step in real quick. The issue with respect to Benita Bay was an interpretation of Benita Bay ordinance. If this had been the city's commercial general district, which actually does allow for rooming houses and things like that to be added, it'd be a different story. So I don't think that the interpretation granted here tonight with this specific project will have substantial impacts on anything else in the community except to put the idea possibly for other large developments that have this kind of private mix. Pelican Landing, other locations that may be similarly situated. I believe that the recommendation from Councilman Forbes, Deputy Mayor, is actually a very good idea because if we can get some of the boundaries and the questions answered through an internal process, then it won't necessarily be an open-ended question like it was this evening. So I think it's good to move forward. I recommend moving forward with that. But I'm not really concerned that the vote tonight is going to have lots of knock-on implications in the short run.
Thank you. Can we get back to the agenda?
Do we need a motion for that?
No.
No, I think we, if you've got direction, we'll move forward.
Move forward, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, officer.
10A, that's the consent agenda. Thanks, folks. God bless America.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor and Councilmember items, we just went through those. City Attorney items.
The first item, I'll ask the clerk to read the title now.
This is a first reading of an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs authorizing the sale of a portion of real property located at 27601 Kent Road, Benita Springs, and providing for an effective date.
Move to second reading.
Second.
Any comments?
Yeah, I'm a little bit concerned because we need to take into consideration that the city's going to have to maintain this and it's got a lot of invasive species.
This is, Corey, this is a different parcel. This is the...
We're not there yet.
Yeah, that's a different...
Yep, okay.
Okay, I apologize.
Okay, where are we at here?
We have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon. Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
And this next item will help to explain the issue with the first item. We had, you recall, at a prior meeting recently, we approved the draft of a purchase and sale agreement to acquire some property from Benita Springs Utility. It's a small piece of property we need for the golf course stormwater drainage project. PSU is working with us. We're moving forward on closing that. But they're also, they have a request, and we knew ahead of time, to acquire a piece of city-owned parcel on Kent Road for potentially a future well site. I have attached their proposed purchase and sale agreement and we are working through getting the title work for both those. Now, these two items, I wish were in absolute final form, but because we are trying to keep up with the work that Baron Collier's doing so that we can use their mobilization to lower the city's costs for making the improvements, what we have done is we've tied these two, the sale and the purchase together. So Benita Springs Utility has asked that they'll close on one once this agreement is signed and we finalize some of the details. Nothing changes with respect to price in both items. The issue, the only issue is making sure that we've got the legal descriptions correct and I've got the title work cleared. So, all I'm asking for tonight is the approval of the purchase and sale agreement and to give me the continued authority to modify those agreements to their final form.
Motion, so moved.
Second.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The next item is adopt zoning resolution to modify the Pelican Landing Development Order for the DRI. I actually wasn't paying attention, so someone from community development put this under my item, so I'm going to look to them to come up here and explain exactly what's happening.
Good evening. For the record, Jaclyn Gensen. We actually did this for the Raptor Bay parcel when we had litigation with WCI. So, what the code says is, when you have a very small, insubstantial change, the land development code allows us to review those administratively and then they can be approved by City Council on the administrative section of the agenda. So in this instance, the Bayview parcel was adding 5.3 acres that was inside the Pelican Landing DRI. Now, it's in the Bayview Plan Development. It's no longer in the DRI. So they are retracting that boundary. So this is just a housekeeping item, I would say, to make the land boundary copacetic with the DRI.
Do you need to vote on this?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Okay, now, 13A, Fraternal Order of the Elks, Juan.
Eagles.
Eagles.
Eagles, I mean. Do you have a comment on this? You're the president of the soccer teams and you're interested in this piece of property?
Hello, good afternoon.
Hey, Juan.
Members of the city. Thank you for supporting us and the program for soccer has been very successful. All the families come to play. You have to come sometimes on Sundays and you have to see all the families, children, and the adults when they're playing. And they're getting all together like little babies and they are full-grown people. It's so nice feeling and that's all from your support. Thank you very much. Also, I see in that opportunity, the green areas in Benita Springs, they are short. And if this group wants to donate that little piece or the land in the north side of Marni Fields, I think it would be a very nice opportunity to extend Marni Fields. If we cannot build more soccer fields, at least we can have a green area, parking, maybe a playground for the children or, you know, tables and shade for people to be sitting. I think it's a great opportunity for extending Marni Fields and get a little bit more land. And we are offering help. We can come and get some people who can help us to take care or if we need to clean some trees or taken down. Of course, definitely, we can have some people to...
Yes, Juan, I appreciate the offer. We do need a licensed contractor to coordinate any work you do for us. But I'm sure you can, you know enough people, you can get a licensed contractor to help.
Yes, some of the people who they are, come to play, they are, the business they have is landscaping. They have license. And of course, we need to coordinate with them, tell them, and set up some time for doing that.
Very good. Thank you, Juan.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask Nicole to speak to any concerns or issues?
Well, I think, Mayor and Council, what we were looking at this evening is, we did receive correspondence from the organization of the willingness to donate the property. If it pleases Council, it may be appropriate for staff to put together some cost estimates for the property to understand better if it does fit into regulation of the soccer fields. But also, one of the major concerns that the city has had for a while is the ability to place a building there for restrooms. We have a call into FPNL. We are setting up a meeting with their real estate folks out of Tampa. And so we wanted to get some more feedback from them if they would allow us to construct a building there since that's slightly offset from the individual power lines. So if you, if it's desire of the Council for staff, which we need direction to start working on, providing you with more information, we could do that at the following meeting, once we've been able to set that meeting with FPNL. One of the things noted on the green sheet is that there is exotic vegetation there. I know that the Eagles have been gracious enough to cut some of that back. But when the city does take over a property, we would have to remove that, so we want to give you a price point on that as well.
Thank you. I move to staff investigate and research and get back to us so that we can do these soccer fields and do a permanent bathroom.
One of the things that I noticed, I've been over there a few times, and there's a cost that's attached to the portlets. And you're going to find that out for Council for us, where we're able to find out what that cost is on a monthly basis.
No, I have a cost for the portlets. We are currently paying for the restroom trailer. We pay almost $2,500 a month for the pumpouts. And then for the portlets, we pay $320 a month. So, yes, if it is buildable land, we would be looking for a restroom facility.
Would be a make-sense decision.
Yes. And simultaneously, we're looking to provide permanent sewer there as well. We're exploring.
Yes.
And from the soccer side of this, I'm there pretty much every Sunday because my son plays on the soccer team over there. The lack of restrooms is an issue. And the portlets, honestly, it's embarrassing because you have, you know, Cape Coral, Fort Myers. I mean, you have all of these other regional cities. You go there, they have actual facilities. And then they come down here and we have a beat-up porta potty. So I think this is a good opportunity to potentially take care of that. And the Eagles have done good work in starting the process, so I'm very in favor of us moving forward with getting this taken care of because the exotics are not going to be that expensive with, as far as, you know, what the value of it can be to us for the land there.
Is it not the main stubbing block is, if FPL says we can't do it, we can't do it?
Even if FPL says we can't do it, still having the land would be beneficial.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Motion to approve.
Well, I think we just understand we need direction, start working with the Eagles organization and bringing you back additional information so you have a full understanding of costs as well.
Arlene, I know they're not the fastest people in the world. Do we have an idea when FPNL might respond to us?
I was assured that we would be getting a meeting shortly. So I expressed that we were trying to, Councilmember Purdon actually brought this up before the hurricane and we were trying to work towards that. Of course, other priorities happened at that point. We were trying to work towards an appointment with their real estate folks in Tampa. So at this point, we've expressed the urgency of that. Now that we have civic organizations willing to provide land, being a civic partner with us, FPNL, we would greatly appreciate it.
I did, from Charlotte Miller, I got a three-page letter from their, from FPNL Real Estate and I sent, forwarded to you. I thought you got it.
Yes, and we did...
Charlotte Miller is responsive to Florida Power Lines, so I think we can get this moving.
So actually, I did communicate with Charlotte and that was a general agreement for commercial for additional uses of easement. I explained to her that this is a city function, that we have, you know, the community participating on this land and so it is elevated to their offices in Tampa.
We can get, we can get some pressure for, we have lobbyists and we have some other folks that can probably pressure them to get to an answer. Bottom line, I don't want to leave the Eagles on the hook for an extended period of time when they're trying to give us a piece of land. So if the hangup is FPL, let's pressure FPL and I can be helpful with that if we need to. But either way, I think we need to get to a point where we're going to be able to vote on it so that they aren't left on the hook for months trying to give us a piece of land.
I'd like to vote on it.
I mean, I'm...
No, it's not a vote, sir. It's direction. And staff has received direction.
I want to have a vote on this tonight. I want to take care of this property tonight. The property's gonna be there, whether we can build on it or not. It's still a piece of property in Florida, it's worth something and these people are trying to give it to us and we're putting all kinds of.
I'll second the motion.
Any other comment?
Yes. We have heard that there's indigenous, uh.
There's Pepperhedge.
Right, that needs to be removed and that FPL may not allow us to build a building. So, wouldn't we want FPL to say, okay, you may put in a permanent, because otherwise we're taking on expense and we still have the porta porters that you don't like.
It's still the land, though. It's, it's the land value. The land value is worth significantly more than whatever the cost to get rid of the Pepperhedge.
We could build a community garden there.
Even if we did nothing with it, just having the value on it, and say we get to a point where we actually put the underground, now we have a large piece of property that we could actually do something with, sell, we could do all kinds of stuff there, but it's free. It's, it's free, we should take it and then, like I said, the cost, either way, it's not gonna be nearly what, what it would be to.
I'd like to know the cost.
That's okay, we can vote on it and then if we have to go there, we will. He made the motion, I seconded.
Sorry, for the record, could you clarify your motion?
Yes, we accept the donation from the Eagles Club of a third of an acre.
That works. Okay, can I second?
This was supposed to be a discussion, but okay, it's a motion.
We had a discussion, you had, you've had the discussion.
Councilmember Bogez.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
No.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey. Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you, folks. Okay, managers report on ear.
Yes, thank you. Mayor and Council, staff has had the opportunity to talk to Dr. Margaret Banion regarding the state mandated amendments to the comprehensive plan. At that time, we've also been looking at the opportunity to provide some additional optional amendments. There could be some cost savings for us if we run the process simultaneously. So, what you have before you is approve a task order for number two to continue that process, so we would be able to do the state required comprehensive plan amendments and at the same time, do any potential optional ones that come out of the workshops as well as any direction from City Council and we would need a motion on that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comment? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogez.
Aye.
City manager?
Thank you. At this time, if Lisa will come forward, we'll provide you with the August financial report.
It's colorful.
Excuse me, folks, thank you very much.
Thank you now, thank you Eagles. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Wait a minute, he was out of order.
That is a he.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have your August financial report, that is eleven months into your fiscal year that we're gonna present to you tonight. This pie chart represents our regular recurring general fund revenue. As of eleven months, it should be noted that while we're eleven months into our fiscal year, we will have two additional months of collections for our state revenue that we receive. And the reason for that, almost all the activity we have in October pertains to September activity. So, when we get our sales tax, we get our communication services tax, by accounting rules and regulations, we need to make sure we get them in the right period. So, this will change slightly, but it is very healthy diversified regular operating revenue. This is again, our general fund revenue, our regular recurring operating revenue. As you can see, we continue to have through this fiscal year favorable trends. That being said, as we've talked about through our budget process, next year, we've projected and the state estimates came in line with that, a two percent, average two percent reduction in our significant revenue sources that are collected at the state level. Sales tax, communication services tax, fuel tax, again, the state economists are projecting a little bit of a reduction in those areas and they are in your budget, but we'd just like to mention that. Ooh, what happened? Let's see, is that still? Bingo. Here we go. Our general fund expenditures, these are fiscal year to date as compared to the prior fiscal year to date. We found that really gives you a, a healthy look at trends holistically for the year. As we've talked about, we are seeing inflationary trends that are not unique to the city of Bonita Springs, but those are continuing to impact our regular operating expenditures and we have projected for that to continue into our next fiscal year with your budget estimates. Restricted revenues, these are restricted as to use, which means when they were adopted, the enabling legislation directed those funds be used for certain things such as our gas tax or for, for road, either maintenance or some of them are used for road capital projects. Our building permit fees, the first one here, that is restricted as to performing building inspections for new construction over in our Community Development Department. The last couple of months, we have had a little bit of an upward trend as we've talked about and your next year's budget estimate will not project for that to continue because we're seeing overall slowing down in new construction. That's what's driving this and that's what also drives your park impact fees and your road impact fees. Again, those trends are not unique to the city of Bonita Springs. Several reasons why, the hurricane, other things that those have occurred, we will be watching those and your next year's budget reflects that continued downward trend somewhat. The other items here, fairly healthy as compared to last fiscal year to date. What we do show you with your cash balances each month, we show a, and these are a snapshot in time, so this is the amount of money that you have at August 31st. We show you the immediate two fiscal years. This allows us to show the accumulation of funds that we utilize for our capital projects. Our capital improvement program, it goes out ten years. We actually, we try to pay as we go for those as opposed to borrowing as much as we can. So, we accumulate those funds as we're planning for the capital improvement. Now, if you see a downward trend in this, that means we've actually gotten to the construction phase and we're utilizing those funds as programmed in your capital improvement program for your specific projects. And those are healthy, healthy movements. These are a continuation of your capital bal, uh, cash balances. These are your restricted. The other funds there at the end, that actually, that little over $2 million, that's an accumulation in your downtown debt service fund. You all will recall, we partnered with Lee County through an interlocal agreement where Lee County and the city contributed to the debt service for the downtown debt. So, that money has been built up there because we've seen growth in our real estate values in downtown, very positive. So, that money sits there and it funds our debt service each year as required. And that's all that I have for you all tonight. I wanted to keep it brief so I didn't keep you too late. Yes, sir.
This'll shock you, Lisa, I have a question. On the gas tax revenues, that surprised me that those were down. Is that possibly because of tourist expenditures? I would thought that would have been offset by construction.
Higher cost of gas, maybe?
Yeah, but higher cost of gas, it, our revenues are down.
Believe it or not, believe it or not, what happens when the fuel price goes up, people conserve fuel even more and, and keep in mind, there's a trend toward buying more fuel-efficient vehicles. So, there's two things that move, as you would think, higher sales, higher collection of taxes. It, it actually works in the reverse. So, our fuel tax in the last, well, handful, probably ten years, it hasn't necessarily moved up as you would suspect with population growth and things of that nature, just because of the reasons we've just talked about.
It's not an anomaly, we could plan on this probably plateauing or even going down in years to come.
Yes, and we, and we definitely look to the state economists, they're really dialed into that and we watch our collections. So, we, I haven't seen a lot of movement nor do I anticipate a lot of movement, maybe slightly down or sometimes maybe slightly up, but not a lot of movement in those category. Great question. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think, but Lisa can check it out and let us know by email, I think the federal government and maybe even possibly the state at different times have reduced the tax to make it offset the higher cost of gasoline, too.
Yes, the, well, the ones that we receive are actual local option gas tax and that rate has not changed at all in the, I don't want to quantify the number of years I've been talking to you all, but it's a good mini-number.
It's not, it's not a, it's not a progressive tax rate. Price doesn't go up, we don't get anymore. It's, it's based on gallons and then the state has taxes that are tied to CPI, so they adjust on a variable rate in the Fed.
Okay, anything else? Jesse, good one?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My next item is to review the city's legislative priorities. We did want to remind you that on our, on October 30th, the Lee County delegation will be meeting. In the past, you've had myself and Assistant City Manager Matt Feeney represent the city. If that is so the desire, we'll continue to do that, but we will be asking to have a prioritized list and have you actually confirm that by a vote at our next meeting for our legislative priorities. We're going to ask our lobbyists to participate in that meeting virtually and we'll have some recommendations on where, from the, working with the lobbyists and looking at our CIP projects that are appropriate opportunities to ask for legislative appropriations, which is again, the same time, we'll get the priorities. We also had some recommendations from our lobbyists that some of the items, this has been a continuated list for several years now, that maybe the governor is on board with these already and maybe we don't need to take our voice on those matters. For example, fracking is one of them where the governor feels strongly opposed to fracking, so we may, may be able to condense this a little bit and really provide more direction to our specific needs. A lot of these, and some of these are more in general in nature. So, and also they, we're gonna provide some recommendations regarding gaming as well that we had some continued on here as well. So, we'll be preparing those updates and have a draft for you for the next meeting. In the interim, if you would like to provide any suggestions to us or anything you want us to put onto the agenda so that it's fully discussed at the next meeting, we'd like to do that in the interim. Thank you.
You have anything else? You have something?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could on that, as far as the CIP projects that we're gonna identify, staff will put together, what, five, 10, so we can kind of vet through those? Okay, and then.
Five and we'd ask you to prioritize those.
Five, and then prioritize them, okay. And then just to understand also, as far as these priorities go, I agree with you that we should definitely cut it down from 10 because we don't get a lot of asks, so we want to make sure that they're specific and, and things that can be actionable for us. In that same vein, I think we should have discussions with South Florida Water Management District, House and Senate on number nine because that used to be a priority, but if you remember last session, the governor decided that he was not gonna let that happen. So, this is something that has kind of gone, we've gone round and round with this one. So, at the end of the day, if we find out that the governor is still not in favor of that, there's no point in putting it on there to aggravate him. So, I think we need to find out that question, which we can do, but, so, along the same idea of cutting it down, that's definitely one of the ones we need to know the answers to before we put it on the list.
And it may be that you might look for a more general ask, which is regional, you know, looking regionally at water issues, so that, you know, they're taking into account all jurisdictions when making decisions. You could have, you can have a more elevated goal that to be able to talk with them about, so when decisions are made at the state level, all local consideration is made at the same time.
No, it's good. I mean, but a lot of, I mean, we don't need platitudes about like, you know, insurance or anything along those lines. We need to, specific, Bonita, specific issues and there should probably only be about five and I think our list should be small, too, so. That's all I've got.
So, we'll, just, we'll be asking for an actual confirmation vote at the, at the next meeting on that, so we can submit that in time to the delegation for their review.
Perfect.
And then, I apologize, we did not have the update on Hurricane Ian actually specifically listed on this agenda, but I would ask that John Dahmer come forward. Recently, there was a newspaper article discussing some of the challenges folks were having in their recovery from Hurricane Ian and I would like him to kind of address how Community Development has looked at some of those and where we unfortunately have some structures that are older and are having to navigate to the new building code.
Good evening. Arlene outlined, there was an article in the Naples Daily News that identified three res, or three residents of separate condominiums in Bonita Springs and they were outlining their concerns and, and how they felt about the process. It included a lot more than permitting and our involvement with it, but it was a portion of what they had discussed. And the three condominiums were Dolphin Way, Casa Bonita One and Bonita Beach Condos. With those, Dolphin Way, we were really down to one last issue with them. They have an older building and that electrical door in that building swings in, it's supposed to swing out. They don't want it to swing out, it'll take away a parking space. We're working with them to figure out how to handle that old door, but that's the last item that we're, we're down to with them. They're still working on the finishing the construction, but all the other permitting has taken place and they're building as we speak. Casa Bonita One, they had questions with their elevators and occupancy. What I found in the research was that it appears that those are state inspections that they're having trouble getting, not local inspections. The state regulates elevators. We're only involved in very small pieces of it, the electrical portion of it, some structural portions of it. So, their concerns with permitting were not necessarily with the city, they were with the state for their elevators. The Bonita Beach Condos, they're still pending their fire review. I think they had resubmitted, oh, it's pending fire review. It was, appears we have signed off on the 21st and the fire department is looking like they're about ready to sign off and it is sent to, oh, ready for issue permit. So, that Bonita Beach Condos, their commercial permit is in the ready to issue. They have a trade permit that was rejected and we're waiting on their resubmital. They have an accessory permit for a boat canopy and the boat canopy, if they choose to get it, would also require a variance, so there's another process that comes into play there. It's not strictly rebuilding what they had. And their fire were permit was rejected July 17th and I think they're probably still waiting on a resubmital for that as well. So, what I took away from the story was not necessarily that the individuals they interviewed were focused on city permitting problems. They had a lot of frustrations dealing with insurance, dealing with temporary living situations, living life after a hurricane. There were portions of it that I just addressed that dealt with permitting, but I didn't take away that that was the, the bulk of this, so. Dealing with the overall recovery, permit-wise, if you remember, there were about 1,200 structures with major or were considered destroyed after the storm. This included the 40 mobile home parks and, and under that, we've had 502 restoration permits issued and we have 15 that are ready to be issued, the contractor just has to pick those up, and 76 that we're waiting on them to amend their plans. So, we are slowly but surely making our way through to get that recovered, so. You will also notice in front of your seats tonight, you had a handout because I didn't have time to put a slide together. We've talked about permit fee waivers and what's going on, I just let you know what the status of. Those are, this sheet provides you the amount that has been waived by permit type, so you can kind of see what's been coming in. The only thing that has been waived are permits that are involved in recovery for Hurricane Ian, so all of the wa- involved in recovery for Hurricane Ian. So all of the waived fees you see on here are directly related to that. So I don't know if there's any questions or thoughts, but that is your hurricane update for tonight.
As you recall, we were asked to provide you with an update on the waived permits at the one-year anniversary.
Okay, Building C is $202,000. How many units are involved with that?
It's no units. That's commercial.
Huh?
That's commercial. The C is for commercial, and the R is for residential.
How many properties are involved in that, in any of these?
Well, I didn't break it down by the number. It was just based upon the permit value.
Okay. So R is residential, and C is commercial?
Yes, sir.
I think maybe for the people that are watching at home, Mayor, it should be good that they know that we waived almost $600,000 in fees. And if you're watching at home, that's your council and your staff at work doing that, and Mr. Dolmer.
Yes, it is. It is a help to the people that were damaged, for sure.
I think at the, some point at the beginning of the first of the year, we'll have some recommendations, as we did with Hurricane Irma, of appropriate permits that we do know take longer in time, and materials take longer, that you may want to continue the extension on. And then there are some that we might recommend at this time that you might want to go back into the normal process.
Currently, is on ending?
So currently, we are waiving them, and I think our recommendation was let us come back to you, you know, right before the first of the year, with some recommendations on what you may want to continue waiving, and what you might want to go back to the regular process. There are definitely materials and contractors that do need some additional time with certain permits, and we want to make sure that that's appropriately afforded that time. But there are probably some recommendations that community development has that could go back into the regular process.
For now, for now, we're going almost to the end of the year at the current rate.
At this point in time, there are no dates to start recollecting fees for Hurricane Ian damage. So we would continue this course until you all change direction.
Very good. Thank you.
I do have some additional items I wanted to address. As we've just started our new fiscal year, October 1, we will be working with you all to begin a series of workshops to go into the individual CIP projects in the order of the strategic priorities, which we included with the legislative priorities. We'll use that as our goals that have been submitted in writing by council. One of those that we need to possibly look at, the council's authority to do so, is the city attorney and I did meet with the director of the Benita Wonder Gardens, their executive director, as well as their board chair, with Nicole. And it may be appropriate at this time, considering that they have submitted to you a capital improvement plan of their own, that we've also submitted to them the items that were addressed by our consultant as far as building code items that need to be addressed, ADA issues. And so it may be appropriate for a joint workshop. It was provided to them the information that if council meets, that is an open forum. We will take minutes. We could treat it as a workshop where there would be no voting or final agenda items, but we could have worked out an appropriate agenda. We would like to suggest to possibly do that before a council meeting, so that everyone's already in town and scheduled for that. I know that they were looking fairly soon, so we were going to reach out to them about possibly your first meeting in November, and maybe starting at 4 o'clock, and then you would go into your council meeting. But we'll have to confirm those times.
Sounds good. Yes, Jesse?
On that, I think it would be advantageous to discuss getting them beforehand a list of our grievances, so we're not starting from, starting from chapter one, and what's going to be a long, long discussion. I don't want them to just show up, and then we hit them with the myriad of issues that have been going on for years. I think that at least the new CEO and, I mean, some of the old board members know what's going, some of the issues that have gone on over the years, but just, so everybody's on the same page before we even sit down. I think they have to have an idea where we're coming from, and some of the issues that we have consistently had with them, and the financial situation in regards to them not fulfilling their contractual obligations on the private-public partnership. And I don't think CIP-type things, you know, they shouldn't be driving the bus on that. So if they want to build an animal hospital, okay, we can have that discussion, but they don't get to say, "I'm going to spend money on an animal hospital, so I'm doing capital improvements." I think capital improvements, I think that bus is steered by us. I think there needs to be a, there has to be some type of financial relationship, because they've been there rent-free for far too long. So these are the hard discussions that have to happen. But it can't be a situation where they're giving us the financials and how they want to do it, because that's not how this relationship works. We own that. So it needs to be understood going into the discussion, these things need to be addressed and brought up. So however we do that, maybe it's they watch this. I don't know. But I think those are, those are important things that they need to understand, that if those are not included in the bag of goodies at the table, I'm not really interested in renewing a contract.
Well, I'll ditto what he said, but I'm not sure we can cancel a contract, but...
Absolutely can. It's ours. The land's ours.
But anyway, we do need to iron out the issues that Jesse pointed out, that have fallen short on the side of the Wonder Gardens in their contractual for years. And so I'm glad somebody else is echoing, and you're going to take it over, because they already hate me.
Chris, did you have something to say?
No, other than, you know, I've been frustrated with the Wonder Gardens and the operating agreement for a number of years, ever since I started running for council back in 19. And I've had recent conversation with others who are, in the past, raising funds for the Wonder Gardens, and they are frustrated with the leadership of the board. And, you know, I think there needs to be, my hope is that we can end up at some point with a serious public-private partnership, where we own the building, and the Wonder Gardens, not-for-profit, actually runs it. But there's a lot of things that had to be worked out. And all I can say is, I just hope that we can get to that point, where we have a relationship where each side can trust each other, each side can work to the benefit of each other, and we can turn the Wonder Gardens, or we can maintain the Wonder Gardens as an asset for our community. But it's been very frustrating, and I hope if there's anybody listening to this that is on the Wonder Garden Board, that they understand the level of frustration that we as a council and we as a city have.
Yes, Fred?
Yeah, I want to weigh in on one thing. That manual or book they had with capital improvements they're proposing, they need to go and have some serious discussions, even though they don't have all the designs, with building inspection, because a lot of that stuff they want to do is going to cost a lot more money than they think it is. And a lot of it is not even going to probably be possible to be done. And that is not fair to the people that are raising money, and to the donators, to have them put something together that hasn't even been talked over yet. Now, they may think it's feasible, but the guy that calls the shots is chief building official and the farm marshal. That's it. We don't have much to do with it.
My understanding, Arlene, is that the new director has brought maybe a little higher level of professionalism and communication to staff. Would that be legitimate?
I would suggest that the new director has been in constant communication, especially after the hurricane, with our staff in regards to us addressing immediate issues and them addressing immediate issues. So we are aware of daily challenges that may occur, where there's communication there. I think what this is, an understanding is, is there is a higher level of thought process on their board's ideas for the facility, and that needs to be addressed by council, whether you agree or disagree with their ideas. And I think, before we jump to the costs, and if it's not the desire of the council, who is the landlord, to move forward in certain directions, they do need to have that conversation with us. And jointly, we need to understand what portions of the improvements that we are required to do, they're going to take part of. We need to understand that.
Well, Fred referenced it, but I just want to comment. The master plan that we all received, the city had no input in that master plan. Is that correct?
Yeah.
That's...
The city council had no...
The city council had...
I would advise you all that they did email and ask Nicole to be a part of some initial meetings, but as far as providing direction on those projects, or how that would move forward, that was not by staff, no. But they did ask for her to participate, which we emailed you.
They invited Nicole, so they could say that the city participated, but that's not really participation.
And I'm advocating that they go and see how much of the stuff they even want to talk to us about is really realistic. I don't want to waste my time talking about something that's not going to work.
I think it's all pie in the sky until they figure out that, they need to figure out what their deal with us is first, before we approve animal hospitals or anything else. They need to get right with us, and then we, and when we have a workable deal, then they can ask us about all of those other things on the wish list. But until we get a workable deal, I don't think there's a contrast extension that I would see, until there's some level of financial commitment from them back to the city. This has to be a partnership. Any nonprofit in the state would love to occupy Imperial River Frontage, where $50 million has already been put in the ground. Anybody would love that. And frankly, every time I get one of the emails talking about how much money they fundraise, if the intent is to show us that they're successful, the intent is missed, because it just makes me more mad that we have gone this far, and we're, every time we have a discussion, we talk about everything except for the elephant in the room. So I'm just, that portion of this round and round has to stop, and it's going to be a tough conversation, but it just, it has to happen.
So I think we have direction. We'll move forward with scheduling, and I would imagine this will be the first of a series of them. Discussions will need to continue. They did provide us with a list of the board directors, which we'll email out to you as well, and we'll, again, provide the financial information that they gave us, and I'm sure you all have, already have a copy of their master plan. If you need the section of our, of our study that we did, specific to the Wonder Gardens, we'll also distribute that to council in preparation of the meeting.
Are we going to bring us back to the next meeting a little bit, so we can just come to a discussion amongst ourselves before November?
I think, I think to Councilman Purdon and Mayor, your comments, I think it would be helpful if the council could provide, myself, Arlene, individually send your concerns about the current relationship, so we can kind of collate a list of the issue areas, so that you guys can talk about it at your next meeting, and we can send that to them to say, "Here are the concerns. You've sent us your plan. You want to sit down and meet. Here are the concerns we have with the relationship, so that you're aware and prepared to discuss them when you have the joint meeting."
And I've already put a list together that I've sent to you all.
But, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Chris, aren't you the liaison to the Wonder Gardens?
I don't think I am anymore.
Oh, I think you are. So maybe you could tell them how we're feeling.
I see their officials at the Rotary meeting, and I have expressed my discontent.
But you are our liaison to the Wonder Gardens?
I think we just continue with the meeting. We'll, we'll speak as a voice to them on that, instead of putting them in the weird position of that, because I think there's, this is too large scale to be like, "Chris, go talk to them."
Well, just let them know, here are the concerns.
Let me tell you, they know.
And they will tomorrow, probably, based on this meeting, I'd imagine.
So I have one specific request, and that is that we ask them where they got the numbers that they put in the master plan.
Well, and part of it is, if you notice, the financials that we got this time around, they're, suspiciously, it went from a $2 million surplus to 1.5 is in this, and 5,000, 500,000 is in this. The money is the same. It just moved to what it's under. And they're under these different funds for things, again, that we didn't approve yet. So I just, if you look at that, look at the financials we got last time, look at the financials we got this time. And that money did not disappear. That money has just been put in to, again, these large-scale projects.
Earmarked.
Exactly. But how are you going to earmark it, when, again, you're not even right with the landlord yet? You don't get to build an extension on your rental home if you are not up to date with rent, I don't think. So that's kind of the discussion we have to have.
I will say, I will say that a major fundraiser, or major fundraising group for the Wonder Gardens is not going to raise any more money or pass anything over to the Wonder Gardens in terms of fundraising, until an operating agreement is nailed down with the city.
Yeah, they extorted us before.
No, but Chris...
Oh, I'm not going to give any money. The city won't let us do this.
No, no, no.
Or whatever. We're going to discuss this in length next meeting. We're going to come up with, I think we're going to have seven different ideas about what...
Well, I think we're looking to have a workshop, so that's when we can have these items discussed, and we'll, ahead of time, circulate an agenda that we get the opportunity for the Wonder Gardens to give feedback on.
I want a discussion amongst us before this workshop, which will be the next meeting.
I think if we could, not all the council members were involved in the last drafting of the, what was still the current operating agreement, but we did, you know, if you recall, myself, Mr. Feeney, Nicole were involved in talking to all the council members, to look at the drafts, look at the issue areas. I don't know that everybody, those issue areas are the same. With this new plan, they may, they may change. So I would ask that, and I'll reach out to make sure that I've got comments from everything. If we could, if we could come up with a list, maybe prepare the agenda for the workshop with Everglades Wonder Garden, put that on for discussion at the next meeting. That way, you guys could kind of narrow in on the issue areas.
I put an agenda for, you know...
And I'll circulate the draft of our current, our current proposed operating agreement.
Right.
And one of the big concerns in that was, during, during the last conversations, we expressed our intent to terminate the agreement and come up with a new agreement, one of the major concerns was all the fundraising that was going on, and the possibility of land being acquired to add to the, to the, to the park, as well as buildings that would be, you know, dedicated to them. Well, what happens then in a situation where we're tied into an agreement, where we're the owner of the property, and they own half the buildings, or they own the parking lots? It becomes, that all needs to be worked out. And the more expansive the plan for growth, the more those details need to be ironed out.
Yeah, you got your work cut out for you there, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two more items. One is, I wanted, for planning purposes, to mention the January 3 city council meeting. In the past, you've given us the ability to cancel that meeting or reschedule to the following week. It does require that we be noticing and providing a packet during Christmas week. What we've done in the past is we've canceled that meeting, and unless there was a zoning concern or issue, or an eminent topic, then we've rescheduled that meeting to the following week. If you're comfortable with that, we would start letting any, any folks know for scheduling purposes. And staff would be preparing that, and agenda items would be before or after that meeting.
Comfortable.
Were you talking about the 3rd?
January 3. It's the, it's the first...
You canceled that one, and we'll have it the 3rd Wednesday.
You would have, you would go back to your regular schedule, which would be the 3rd, the 3rd Wednesday of the month, unless there was something eminent that we needed to have a meeting for, then we would do it. That's second week in January.
You said the next week.
Yes. If we, if we needed something, we would contact you all and post a meeting if there was something we had to address.
If you want to go on vacation.
We have several staff that do like to have, and we're actually closed for three of those days, so it's, it's very challenging for those who are here to put agenda items together and properly notice it. And also, we have a lot of contracts that folks are difficult to get a hold of during that time as well.
Yeah, plus the council might want to go out of town or something, too, you know.
Not then.
All righty.
And then the last item, I just wanted to thank you all. I've just completed my second year serving in a five-year contract with you all, and it's appropriate for me to send out an evaluation form to you all. it's appropriate for me to send out an evaluation form to you all, so I'll be doing that. It does provide that you'll give the city manager, uh, goals in writing, which you've done through your strategic priorities. If that's the will of the council, previously you've used those as your, as your goals that you provided to me in writing. So I'll distribute that. Um, we do have several different forms. It's up to council, whichever form you choose to use for the evaluation, I'm comfortable with. I will be copying, uh, the city clerk and the city attorney and, uh, Lisa as HR. And then if you have any questions for me, feel free to contact me. You can also contact any one of them individually if you wish to ask them about the process independent of me.
Do we ever get to evaluate the city attorney?
Sure. You want to put me on too?
No.
My contract's terminal at will, so I'm not, I'm not.
He's on every meeting. We, he gets judged every meeting.
I recommend for the city manager, we could.
Yeah, Feeny doesn't. Yeah, we need one for Feeny.
Feeny's always quiet.
Yeah, he is very quiet, maybe he.
I haven't done the math yet, but every, every year, if you recall, under our agreement, when we get to October, if, if I've come in under budget of return funds back to the city, I haven't done the math yet, so I'm, that, you can, you can treat that as my review if I'm successful in that.
Your, your contract's reviewed once a year?
It's, my contract just is, is ongoing unless, unless terminated by.
At will, at will.
But at the end of the fiscal year, he tells us if he's overspent.
If I've overspent.
Or if he's giving, we don't have to pay and we vote.
I'll, I'll, I'll put a memo together, explain the, the way the, the fee structure is.
He does all his continuances in November and December and then January.
Um, one other, real quick while we're on me, I, I did want to motion one item that I, I didn't have an opportunity to put on the agenda, which is, uh, we had scheduled the Three Hard Working Americans Trial for this month. There was a hearing this morning on our motion for summary judgment. Both Arlene and Councilman Corey participated in that. We did get the case continued to some time period in the latter part of November, early December. Unfortunately, Councilman Corey, who's been delegated to, uh, be our participant in that process, is going to be traveling. So I am looking for another council member. Uh, this wouldn't be in the same role as mediation arbitration would it really be, is someone to show up to the trial, to sit with, sit with us, the city, and, and just observe and make sure that they can report back everything accurately to the city council.
I'll volunteer.
Do we get to fight?
Nope.
No.
I'm out.
Yeah.
I'm happy to volunteer as well.
Okay. Let's wait till we get the schedule down, we can narrow it down because it will be over the holiday season, so.
It may, it may move.
Yeah.
So let's wait.
Yeah, because it could be you, it could be you or.
No, I'm, I'm going private fishing in the.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, we, we have not, we didn't get the exact date. It's any time between November fourteenth.
There, there was even a threat of Thanksgiving, so I wouldn't want to commit anyone to this, this timeframe.
Why, why did they move it again? Why did it get moved?
Uh, availability of council, the, the, essentially the, the court will always sort of say it's in this month and then at the beginning of the month, they start to try to narrow down everyone's schedule. And when everyone looked at their schedule, that didn't work, plus our pending motions haven't been ruled on. And if it's ruled in our favor, case is dismissed and we don't have to go for it. So just in judicial economy, it makes sense to kind of weigh these things out a little longer.
That's good.
Yes, it is.
All right, you're done, uh, you're done? Okay, Jamie, you have anything for us tonight?
I don't.
How about Jesse?
No, sir.
Well, we're going to round a roll.
Yay, I'm not, I'm not last. Well, this morning, it was wonderful. There was a walk to school with the, uh, elementary, uh, children of Benita Springs and it was so fabulous to see so many parents and of course, Arlene was there and our sheriffs and Bobby was playing music because I'm like, we need music. And the kids are like, yeah. But, um, well, it was interesting, walking back, I talked to a young man, young person, and I'm like, you're not a dad. No, my parents couldn't make it, so I took my brother and then he, I said, okay, and so you're missing school? I told them, but then I'm going to work and I'm thinking, wow, how wonderful. You take your little brother on the walk to school for your parents and then you go to work. How proud your parents must be. What do they want you to be? Do you like school? He's like, oh, let's just say the Dr. Root would be way too much school for me. And I said, you know what? College isn't for everybody and our president of the Senate, Kathleen Passadoma, is trying to work for workforce housing and to, to find ways that kids don't have to go to college. Learn a trade. You know, I mean, look at the cars plumbers drive or electricians drive. You don't have to go to college and get into debt and, you know, I talked to him about arthrax and, and he was just like, oh, so college isn't the end all. No, it's not. It's, work doesn't have to be a four-letter word that ends in K. You should enjoy what you do and love what you do and, and getting excited about it. And so I was happy that I made it. And it was lovely also to get a ride back to, to, to the flea market. And we, well, I'll stop there because it's a long night, so.
Okay, Fred, you got anything for us tonight? Sure you do.
Yeah, I, only thing I'm going to report on is basically more for the audience and a lot of them probably read it, but, uh, I know, I attended the press briefing at the Lieutenant Governor. It was, it was an all-star cast. You had the Lieutenant Governor, Secretary FDOT, our district secretary for District One, that's our district, and we had Don Scott there, he didn't speak, and we had, uh, Kathleen Passadoma, I believe. And, um, it was, uh, and Janet Persons. And it was to announce again that they're really aggressively moving out on widening I-75. It will, the starting widening section will be, uh, Golden Gate Parkway up to Corkscrew Road. It'll, it'll go from the six lanes to eight lanes for us. And they're spending, they got seven hundred million dollars, I think, programmed out and they, uh, they're, they're claiming that they're going to do all this probably ten, fifteen years ahead of the schedule it was on. So those are all good things. They'll also be redoing the, uh, on and off ramps, making them longer, probably making more lanes, things like that. So, uh, just wanted to bring everybody up to date on that. It was a very good press con, I think everybody there was happy and nobody was asking, got your questions.
Very good.
Yes, sir. Just briefly, nothing from TDC, the quarterly report? That'll be interesting to see what's happening as far as revenues go, but I wanted to give a, a real commendation. I think we forget about social services in our city that people think aren't provided, but CAFE for Life, I did not realize until this week that they actually provide, um, scholarships and do other things in the community. So I got a very heartwarming email. I don't know if anybody else received it. Two young men in one family, they're both autistic, one has never spoken before outside his home, so fairly severely autistic. And CAFE for Life worked with the, um, Benita Arts, which we used to call Center for the Arts, provided them with a scholarship. Both these young men are improving greatly, their teachers are amazed by the improvement. And again, it was CAFE for Life reaching out to Center for the Arts and doing that. So, yeah, was not aware CAFE for Life has a bigger reach than we thought and they do wonderful things in our community, so I thank them for that.
Yes, that's right. Chris Corey.
A couple of things. One, uh, for those of you that have been waiting on, uh, Hurricane Ian being named a qualified federal disaster, there was an agreement, uh, between Representative Greg Stube and, uh, Kevin McCarthy that that would be brought up and passed in the coming week. That sort of went up in smoke yesterday, uh, with the ouster of Kevin McCarthy as the speaker. The House is in recess until Wednesday. So, uh, yeah, I, I don't know that there's going to be a solution passed by October the fifteenth so that, uh, for you, those of you who have not filed your tax return by October the fifteenth, I guess you should be prepared to file it under the existing rules, uh, which may mean that you finalize your return sometime next week. I think that's a shame. I won't make any political comments other than I was disappointed in the McCarthy ouster. The other thing is, uh, Rep- Rep- State Representative Anna Botana and I have been talking quite a bit about, uh, a old proposal that is now over ten years old, uh, about, uh, the extension of, uh, uh, State Route nine fifty-one. And one of the things in the Resiliency Task Force that we are aware of is that between now, uh, almost the end of twenty twenty-three and twenty thirty, not that far away, six years, there are going to be another three hundred thousand people move into Lee County. And we simply have to have another way to get people who are in Collier County and Southern Lee County up to, uh, in effect Corkscrew or Lehigh somehow to bypass. You know, the toll road went down in flames. But, you know, we're going to have to deal with that. So I am backing, uh, Mr. Representative Botana. I am, uh, encouraging those of you on council to write, write to Don Scott, uh, Director of the Lee County MPO and support the idea that we need a north-south connector between Amokley and Lehigh or at least Amokley to, to Corkscrew to relieve the problem. Now, I'm not saying it has to be where the original nine fifty-one is or was planned, which is basically Boca Grand North. It could be further east, it might be Collier Boulevard, uh, in Amokley going north, which would put it out of the, the, uh, the DRGR that we're concerned with. But we need to do something to ameliorate the, the increase in population, so that's my comments.
With that being said, we should look at exactly what that looks like because we, the last option outside of the DRGR is something that I think is something that we could probably have a general consensus on, but if you're talking about busting the DRGR open, that, I think that's a whole different.
No, I think what he's talking about, Jesse, is he's talking about a raised roadway that would have no, no exits during the DRGR and with no exit, there would not be any, uh, incentive to do development in the DRGR. But, uh, so that's what he's pushing, that idea?
If it's out, again, if it's outside the DRGR, I, I'm good with that. I think the idea of, they've been trying to bust open through Collier Boulevard since the beginning of time and, and we've been saying no. And that was half the battle with, with the mines was because we didn't want to give up our autonomy on that. So that's something we fought for, we spent a lot of money on, so it's like, I, unless we know exactly what we're looking at, I'm hesitant on saying that we want a north-south route, if it's going through the DRGR. If it's specifically not, then.
All I'm suggesting is that it's up to people on council to become familiar with what the issue is and make their own decision.
But I, I want to interject something. I think that nine fifty-one coming up is okay with this exception. And that is, the plan usually ends up saying, you come up into Benita Str- Benita Springs and you make a left turn on Beach Road. And that's the worst plan you could have because you're going to kill what's left of the capacity of the road. So that means it's got to go straight when it comes up, cross Benita Beach Road and keep it going. And that, and that puts you into the county DRGR, not ours. It would have to be built so there's plenty of underpasses for water flow because you don't want to create a dam by the road. But that, that's the crux of it. I'll support that, but the other, no.
Let's see a workable model of what it looks like and then talk about it.
Yep, that's fine. I'm just encouraging you to think about it.
Could I add one thing, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
On, um, last week, actually Jamie and I went to the anniversary of, um, Hurricane Ian in Fort Myers Beach and it was very touching because many of us are still hurting. Um, in, in Fort Myers, they unveiled a plaque of those that died. So we have those that lost their homes, we have those that lost their memories and businesses and we're moving forward and we really are, we're so resilient. And as I was driving up, Benita Beach Road, Hickory Boulevard is getting better, but Fort Myers Beach is definitely, i- i- if you can go there and have dinner, that would be nice, but also stop at docks or coconut jacks. But we have to, um, rebuild and we will. The, the sheriff was there and he said, we're going to build the pier in Fort Myers Beach better than Naples. I said, well, Naples is better, building better than they did. And, and then somebody said, how many years? Four. Oh, come on, come on, challenge them. Get the, get the, we, we built a bridge in, in six, six days, um, three days for one. So I'm hoping that our pier in Fort Myers Beach is built better and quicker.
There's people on Fort, on Benita Beach that are still living in hotel rooms, that can't move in their condominiums. Sorry for Fort Myers Beach, but we have, we're the city of Benita Springs and, and.
But we're all a community.
Okay, fine.
Southwest, southwest Florida is coming back more resilient.
Very good, very good. Anything else? Public comment? No public comment? We're adjourned. Thank you.